The Rodney Board of Education meeting is called in order. The Board of Education is in compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 and set of the Open Public Meetings Act. The time, date, and location of this meeting was appropriately advertised by identifying in retrospect, as well as posting notices in the Borough Hall, Rodney's Post Office, Maryville School, Align Bank and School, Grace County School, and the Rodney Public School District website. Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll call more members.
This is Derek.
Yes.
This is Baby.
Here.
Mr. Buckton.
Here.
Ms. Davidson. Mr. Lego.
Here.
Mr. Murray. Ms. Benzarella.
Here.
Ms. Sims.
Here.
Ms. Walden.
Here.
We have more.
Also present Mark Ayamucci, Superintendent, Dr. Sean McCann, Business Administrator, Director of Public Instruction, Ms. Shae Yezi, Principal Bingham County School, Mr. Steve Keely, Principal Volks School, Mr. Steve Maloney, Vice Principal Volks School, Ms. Gladis Sutter, sorry guys, I need to say, Director of Child Funding Team, and Mr. Frank Cahn, Supervisor of Building and Grounds. At this time, I need a motion to approve the regular meeting on September 10th, September 17, 2019.
I make a motion to approve the regular meeting.
Awesome.
Motion made by Maria and seconded by Patty. Any questions? We'll call.
This is Derek.
Yes.
This is Baby.
This is Baby.
Mr. Buckton.
Yes.
Mr. Lego.
Yes.
Ms. Benzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sims.
Yes.
Ms. Walden.
Yes.
Motion passed.
At this time, we have a presentation.
Tonight, we have Mr. Michelle, some special guests. Mr. Michelle is an already created C position this year, and has had some popular down in the program. She can share some of the things that have been good for his students. Will he get a video clip as well?
You know, this year, we've been doing this Downing Digest for a few years now, and it started out as a newsletter coming out from Ms. Yezi each month, sent home to the parents, and kind of detailed everything that was going on. And over time, we took what was the Downing Digest and the Bingham Buzz, and we turned it into a student broadcast. And we converted it from a newspaper, so it's kind of transitioned over the years. And the production just got better and better each year. I've been kind of upping the ante each time, so I'm gonna turn it to a presentation, and I have some of my, four of my great broadcasters from Downing to share something that they really enjoy about working on the broadcast. So, take it away, okay? I'm gonna pause right there for a second, just because we do have a lot of entries this year. In combined with Building Kid, 51 news reporters that joined, so there's a big entrance this year, so it kind of takes four minutes to get started, but I kind of want to give you a preview of what actually goes on in the broadcast itself. Let's start.
Tuesdays at 9:10 was back to school night. Parents and family were invited into the classrooms to meet teachers in their presentations on their child's class. Downings and Bingham was decon shortly because summer dress was meant to be on. We looked into the closet and chewed this closer with, with a paper in the field to enjoy our mission, your shadow, your shadow, your work. For any of the gathering members, now that I'm speaking, you should show your show. Mr. Michelle can tell us what C and S was.
Yes, C and S for Science, Technology, Engineering, Art.
Wait, what's, what makes the scheme live, Bingham, when you realize?
Okay, so the, the field acts were desktop computers, and they were all in the rows of the room. The concern about this room is that we're doing more like center locations, sort of like Susan and Mary and daily five and reading, and daily three and a half, or we're doing a steam center, or steam stations, if I like to call them. So they get a chance to be on the touchscreen on the books, they get a chance to be on our iPad rows, they get some time at the yoga class station and do some building. They're gonna have to be in these buildings as well, with the, the little supervision floor, where we can then little bit of the drones and the robotics, and do some green screen as well.
What do you think of the scene on the shirt?
I think the mazes.
Mazes, for the Easter hours?
Yeah.
Very, very cool.
What's your favorite part about teaching at Downing?
Well, my favorite part about teaching at Downing is seeing all the diversity I'm used to. I've been teaching in part of my father's, with the past five years, and now I'm in the student position. And seeing a lot of faces I've seen always before, and seeing siblings or students that are all for, is really cool. There's a lot of diversity this year, and we're doing the back tires, and some of the first ones that have done the back are also in the past, so it's time to have one of them come to us again, which is neat. But I'm just happy to be here at Downing, and be working with them.
And this is our room right here, taking a picture of Dr. Bingham right there. But a lot of cool things happening in the room. We have our new green screen wall, we're utilizing our iPad rows, kind of like teleconference in the room, so the students look like they're reading right to the camera and speaking. And I have four of them here, so why don't I bring them on real quick, and they can tell you something they really enjoy about the broadcasting, maybe something about the scheme lab, and then I'll make it back to you. All right, so just wanna introduce yourself. This is, what's your favorite part about the scheme lab? We're doing current.
Probably going through trying to build something around the same.
There you go. So we're doing some projects in the room.
My name is Gordy, and what I like about the scheme lab is that we get to build and build stuff, like make like towers and stuff.
How about your drills? What's your favorite part about doing your drills, please? Real funny stuff. And this is Addison. The iPad, all right, using the iPad. So a couple of new things we're doing pretty shortly, is I'm having some of my reporters branch out, we're gonna be doing some writing pieces, I've already asked Addison to write something on the side, and kind of present it as an extra piece. And we're also gonna start next month shooting in 4K video, it's a 1080, which is pretty cool, so it's gonna be ultra clear, which I'm excited about. So we have some cool things ahead, and I'm pretty excited about the rest of the year, so this is just the beginning. Thank you. Thank you, thank you for coming. Thank you so much, everybody.
At this time, we're open for public comments on agenda items only. Anyone have any public comments on agenda items? If there's no public comment, then we'll leave along to the superintendent's report.
Derek, so do you want to leave this for the meeting? You wanna stay, you wanna walk away, you wanna leave?
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming. Are you about to go first?
All right, so a couple of things. I'm not gonna give you the some of the mundane parts of my Monday parts of my Monday work for the month. Just want to highlight some of the great things that happened in the history. Last month night, we were able to have a 19-year-old author present to our school with her parents, Sophie Rea, who's a freshman at University of Texas, 1992. She basically wrote a book, dealing, discussing her feeling of anxiety, and she did a speech with our sixth, seventh, eighth grade students during the day, for the Q and A, and also given some dialogue on what things are happening, what is her body and head. Having thought of other parts, which she shared with parents that night, some things like, I wish my parents would see me more, I wish I had some pressure on me. So we really kind of started that dialogue. We did do a copy of the book, the district, and share my copy, and finish my book, which was really good. It was just a really nice event. Talking about early policy meeting, we loved to have the good parents, as I said, we blessed it out, we sent out information, we did it in summertime, we sent out, like, the school year, we blessed it out that weekend, that night, a lot of people visiting, so we were happy to be able to show it up, and hoping people got something that matters, so, yes.
Send it to council, because you did everything on the board there. Can you put it on the Rodney Board?
I don't know if we sent it to Rodney Board or not, but...
Well, make sure that I get this information, because I didn't announce it by council, I didn't talk about it in the process, and I'll make sure to reschedule.
Okay, great, thank you. But it was really a great event for those who showed up, and hopefully just to dispense that conversation. We're able to participate in the Rotary, sponsoring an interact club, the middle school, I think it was the 600th, I think it was the 600th, I guess, interact club, this, the interact club, it's a group request, that's kind of cool. We had that interact as a middle school activity, but there was some conversation over the last couple of years we're starting that, so we were very passionate that that started. So we had a nice tryout, because we were just doing the, 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 seventh, eighth grade students, and then they weren't, we're probably as well, weren't really sure on how they were, what the response would be, and we started promoting that last year after we did the June Fair. They started making flags on the table, and that's a lot of kids involved. So we're gonna do a lot of new service partners throughout the year, and they're taking the money, so, handling the veterans, and bringing over, to the, to the, to the, to drive, things like that, so they're really gonna get things going. Rotary sponsored it, they gave us our first $100, I believe, to get that done, but Rotary has its own self, so we'll be raising money throughout the year, some great things, we're excited about that. Also, the scouting is a big thing, this is gonna be a problem, and I'll see the public voices coming about promoting the scouting, and I believe they have some of their highest numbers, they had, some skate, there's skating hall, I've touched that all time, but I don't much want to do that, but I know some great organizations that have set them up, we always end goals, and rock that, okay? I'm gonna step back. Simple, same, we had this conversation all time, this is all, yeah. It's simple, it's my colleague, many years ago, right? We're talking about the lack of teachers. Not so specifically as like, maybe elementary level, but specialty areas, so we really have all the time filling long terms up requests, or finding people in highly qualified areas, since there's been a big push at the academy level, having promoted people getting through education profession, and also what type of people we're having in. Fortunately, we do some extensive interviews as administrative team, and wonder how people have gotten through the process, and are, we don't want to raise that key, but we're supposed to see. So we are looking for, you know, highly qualified teams, the best we can get, but there is a problem, to stay up on the game. So we know the best we can, a couple of long terms applications coming up, get it spilt, but, at this point, it's that's it. Mr. Buckton, I had this conversation last year, about conflict with baby schools, it's a problem at the middle school level, which is not, a bigger problem at the high school level. Finding organizations wants to come out, spoken for public health, they do have a lot of great expressions, that's why I started posting, sharing videos with the chair of parents. As far as getting one of these after the presentation, that's still, that's far enough to be a hundred right now, for that reputation, I guess, six, eight weeks, we're not, we're able to do the best. We'll be here in the next couple of years, Dr. Perrin, I'm just gonna be talking about the larger state, we use changing standards again, Dr. Perrin, so that implementation will be 22, 23, so we're early, so we'll be seeing a step, though a lot of different things over the next couple of years, we're able to change the standards again, for the state. This is Dr. Perrin, we've been together since about 2013, this is our third, third organ, we've been this long enough, this is a billion, that's probably our sixth, time has gone to that, and we're changing, that's a big push. Of course, we always tell you, there's a value chain, but I have had some different workshops with that, it's a little bit better than it has been, but, you know, it can only update, Dr. Perrin, just to provide some further, maybe, but that's the big push right now in Jersey. Right, again, my greatest honor, district, just wanted to highlight a couple of those things, at this time, we're gonna talk about the negative things that happened, if you have any questions, we can, there's really a whole lot of negative things going on. This is, what happened last, energy, fire, firework, and festival, we do it on Sunday, that last one going out, it's probably Thursday or Friday, like, it's 10, 11.
And that's at the fire?
Yes.
Oh, firework. Thank you.
Any questions for, Mr. Ayamucci?
I'm gonna do my job.
But Dr. Perrin can't wait to speak.
Okay, so, hi everyone. So today is actually October 15th, so that's a really big day for the business office, because on October 15th, we take a data snapshot for the state of New Jersey, and that information is what we use as we plan for our budget, and all that information, so making sure that every school district in the state of New Jersey, October 15th is the day you have to submit that information, and then when we start budgeting, which we started already in terms of identifying changes, those are the numbers that are used. So it's cross referencing things between districts, so for example, if students are displaced, or we can invent out, or we have charter students, we have choice students, it's showing a grid between districts where students are, where they're attending, and making sure that all those numbers match up, and communicating with each district that they deal with. We've already started budgeting, budget planning for 2021, so of course, we'll be hearing that come up, working with building principals, I was frank, marking myself, identifying what needs we're gonna be seeing in the upcoming year, just before we know it, it's gonna be time to approve our 2021 budget, and making sure that all those items are in place. And then also, we're currently in the process of continuing care for our food service audit. We get audited by our bank of culture every three years, so this is one of our lucky years, and we're paying close attention to Volks this year, it's going gold, and the last audit was failed, so they come in, they kind of see how things are done, making sure that things are correct, and offering guidance, if that is necessary at that point. Hopefully, since we have the same crew of people, the ones who were the last audit, we kind of feel a little bit more comfortable going through it this time, and are hopeful for what we will be hearing from them. We just finished up our professional development on February 11th. Some of the topics were mental health, we did CPI training, which is how to deal with situations for our students who might need more support in classroom. We did tech integration, making sure teachers and staff are aware of all the technology that's available, that they can integrate in their classroom. And then also, we had our consultants from Red Millie provide a positive teacher support training for staff as well. Something we've been looking at in terms of curriculum is the New Jersey SLA, formerly Park, has actually released a lot of their questions from the prior test. So as staff and trade level, we've been looking at those questions, we've been identifying different norms that we're seeing within the questions, and trying to identify where we can improve our own instruction and practices, abilities, and looking for that continuity across grade levels, and even between teachers and content areas. And then finally, observations have started, so we're full swing with future observations, and we'll be continually with that. As Mr. Ayamucci said, curriculum items do change continually, and we will continue to update and stay on top of any that's started, so that's all I have for us right now.
Any questions for Dr. Perrin? That is kind of all for today.
I just like to kind of sleep, but not.
Any questions on the principals, nurses, building and grounds, and special education board that were attached to our agenda? Is not any committee reports? Is there something to add?
Well, I would, um, that the, this month's board director base and head of education was mentioned, nothing, but it's a good, has come up. I did attend the By County, I'll say, Lawson County, New Jersey School Board meeting last week, and I gave you a copy synopsis of the presentation made by Emmanuel Fattin of the Allen County School District, and it kind of bounces off of the presentation by the young author, Sophie, who was here last week, and I'm telling you, Sophie made a really good point. When she was struggling, she was bipolar, manic depressive, plus high anxiety, she was seeing a psychiatrist, taking medication, and she said, one of the things that was critical of her, when she was going through school, especially when she got out of high school, was really knowing every standard. She said, can you imagine a sixth, seventh, or eighth grader who just lost a sibling? And the teacher said, well, I think you should go see our social worker, and the child doesn't even know the social worker, how uncomfortable that child would feel to try and go up about his or her feelings? So the point that Sophie made, I thought was really, really important, is that every member of the school needs to know that children are in school. I remember I was teaching in a high school, and about once a week, the principal, who would be neighbors, would get on to make a brief announcement, and when he would introduce himself, he would say, "Mr. Brown, you're a principal." And I remember as a teacher, kids walking down the hall, softening their teeth, saying, "God, I didn't know he was our principal." To me, that was a defense, that this is your school, you have a lot of business, we don't even know who you are, and you're president, so I think that's really critical. And one last thing, I saw this story, it seemed like Eric was talking about how to deal with anxiety, how to deal with pressure, and I had a personal good friend in America, and talking about that, and ended with a quote from Dr. Suits, and it was like this, "Today you are you, that is true, that is true. There was no one alive who was youer than you." That was definitely appropriate, that's what we're talking about. That's what I...
Thank you. Any, anyone else? Sure, Amy will give us enough to next one, which is bad. So let me move on to new business. Under operating transportation, I need a motion to approve item numbers one through three.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
I do, I go number three.
Number three compares with maintenance plan in one, so that's done manually, to show what projects we've done, how much it costs, and we're all following the...
That's fine, as long as I know what time it is, then I can understand. Any other questions? We'll call.
This is Derek.
Yes.
This is Baby.
Yes.
Mr. Buckton.
Yes.
Mr. Lego.
Yes.
Ms. Benzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sims.
Yes.
Ms. Walden.
Yes.
Motion passed.
First, I need a motion to approve item numbers one through six. I need a motion to approve item numbers one through six on the first time. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, it's how you're setting, but... Motion made by Maria and seconded by Barbie. Any questions? We'll call.
This is Derek.
Yes.
This is Baby.
Yes.
Mr. Buckton.
Yes.
Mr. Lego.
Yes.
Ms. Benzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sims.
Yes.
Ms. Walden.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Under finance, we have, I need a motion for item numbers one through 16C there.
I make a motion to approve item one through 16C.
Awesome.
Motion made by Maria and seconded by Angel. Any questions? We'll call.
This is Derek.
Yes.
This is Baby.
Yes.
Mr. Buckton.
Yes.
Mr. Lego.
Yes.
Mr. Murray, sorry, Ms. Benzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sims.
Yes.
Ms. Walden.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Under curriculum, I need a motion to approve, nothing. I'm sorry. Okay, please, for a second, thank you, Angel. Under policy and public relations, I need a motion to approve item numbers one through 10. I'm gonna have to ask you to put right into the pen. This being by Angel, seconded by Patty. Any questions there? We'll call.
This is Derek.
Yes.
This is Baby.
Yes.
Mr. Buckton.
Yes.
Mr. Lego.
Yes.
Ms. Benzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sims.
Yes.
Ms. Walden.
Yes.
At this time, you're open for public comment, so if you have any public comments this evening? All right.
Hi. Is Chair Lady Gulliver, since you're, your teacher's Rosa?
No, you can't coach, you know anyone?
Nothing.
Mrs. Gulliver, I think that was such a cute image. I'm like, what are you doing? You're fired.
No, that's a good question, I called Mr. Ayamucci, asking the same thing.
Because we know, because I, and I thought maybe we didn't have come first, but, it should've been, did fantastic, I think. They should have been doing fantastic, I thought. Your relations, they were a lot.
Yeah, no, we will still offer that, that is not going away. We just are in need of coaches. And I know that Mr. Peely reached out to the high school because our principal sent an email to our entire state of asking if anyone was interested in the coaches. So we're on the lookout.
Oh, okay. I hope so, because they really...
No, they love it.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, alright, Ms. Kelly?
Ms. Kelly, one sixty-one, four seven. What is the show that Mrs. Margie is taking her children to in May? Do you know the name of the show?
Actually, I can speak on this because I have to tell the paperwork. There, there's a few options there. She wasn't quite sure, she was looking.
I think it's Aladdin.
They, they did, okay, so they decided to give her permission.
Yeah, we can buy.
About the staff trip or the student trip?
That the kids were selling candy?
For Aladdin. There was like a few options, and they were trying to decide which one to go to. I guess she was leaving it up to the children, so...
Yeah, she gave them choices and they picked one in the eyes. Sort of like the archer and shit.
Yeah. No, no question, that's in what, May, Mr. Peely? May, yeah. That's it, so. Any other questions? Go to the order, you're about the fire department on Sunday, anything else? Alright, this time I need a meeting for executive. Our meeting is next month, is November nineteenth, back at the Bold Library, which looks fantastic, by the way. I need a motion to adjourn.
I need a motion to adjourn.
A motion made by Maria. All favor.